Good evening, everyone. Welcome, everyone, to the November fourteenth, two thousand sixteen Board of Selectmen's Meeting. I'd like to have a motion, please, to approve the regular board meeting minutes of October twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen.
So moved second?
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Hearing none. Steve, is there any public participation for tonight?
There is not, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Let's move on to item number three, Presentation and Action Items. We have a presentation from the Human Rights Committee. Mr. Chatwin, Mr. Vincent, and Mr. Greif.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
Welcome.
Okay. We just thought that we would like to come before you and give you an update as to what we've been doing for the, for our first year of existence, so to speak. So we're gonna do that very quickly, 'cause I know you've got a lot on your agenda, all right? So why don't we just make sure. As you, just, just to reiterate, although I think you probably already know this, the structure of the committee is such that it has four Board of Selectmen appointees, including one clergy member, okay? Three appointments by the school committee, one appointed by the, by the police, the chief of police, and one student member appointed by the superintendent of schools. Then we have three ex-official members, which consist of Mr. Mayo, Chief Smith, and superintendent of schools, Kim Smith. The two Smiths, I just thought of that. Our first year, we want, we decided to focus more on education and organization and just kinda get the thing together. We have developed the website, we've done, we've put a Facebook page up, we've got an email address, we've got a brochure that we've been working on, and the one that we've got now, I think, is pretty much it. We've got a logo and everything on it. We've participated in Wakefield One-O-One, the first two occasions or occurrences of Wakefield One-O-One, welcoming new people into the community. We've participated, we've participated in the farmer's market this summer on three different occasions. Again, this is all part of trying to get people to know that we exist and, you know, what we, what it is we do. We participated in the, last year in the, or this year, this year, yeah, in the Wakefield Public Schools International Night in April, in April. We've participated in the Festival of Talia, okay? We've, we've established connections during the year with a variety of different human rights organizations, which, including, we've been working with, had contact with the Merle Rose and Reading Human Rights Commissions. We became a member of the Mass Association of Human Rights Commissions, which meets monthly in Medford, and it's, it's a number of communities, all of, all of, all human rights committees, but from a number of communities. We've just started going to those meetings. They, they have been, and I'm sure will continue to be, very helpful, because you get different perspectives from, from all across this area, really. And we have connected with the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination. Now, one of the other things we have done, and we will talk about that in a couple of minutes, is we've developed policies and procedures, which I believe you all got copies of, and we're going to, Bob Vincent, to my left, is going to go over that. But another thing I wanted to point out in this first year again, is that we've put together a team that's putting, that's organizing a Martin Luther King event here in Wakefield, okay? And we're in the process of developing what it is we wanna do in 2070, okay? So with that said, I'd like to turn it over for, for now, to Bob, to discuss the policies and procedures that we've put together, which I believe you all have received a copy of.
Yeah, good evening. As Bill indicated, my name is Bob Vincent. First thing I wanna touch on is why we felt policies and procedures were important. We thought it was imperative for the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, ourselves as the Human Rights Commission, and the citizens of Wakefield, to understand the purpose and functions of a Human Rights Commission. We had appointing letters from, whether we were appointed by the Board of Selectmen and School Committee, but we felt it was important for us then to delineate what our functions and powers and responsibilities would be in writing, and that's the document you have in front of you. How we put that together was, we reviewed Wakefield's boards, commissions, and committees to see what they currently had in, in writing, as well as reviewing area cities and cities' ordinances and towns' bylaws, with an emphasis on towns, since where a town is well. And the one that was most akin to what we put together was the town of Arlington. What we ended up doing is, if you look at the policies and procedures, you'll see, early on, the content of it is membership terms, quorum, things like that, so we understand how we regulate ourselves and how we turn over members of the commission. But we also looked at putting together an educational component and looked at the enforcement component. And you'll see that, if you look at the policies and procedures, that it's, it really delineates a myriad of, a multitude of educational responsibilities that we are looking to undertake here in the town of Wakefield. There really is no enforcement aspect to this, because candidly, enforcement of discrimination complaints in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts falls under two bits of jurisdiction. One, Massachusetts General Law one fifty-one B authorizes the Massachusetts Commission Against Disabilities to handle any discrimination complaints, and they have not delegated that to any towns or cities. Furthermore, some cities, and at least one town, Arlington, have created either an ordinance or bylaw that's anti-discrimination, and within there, they've given authority for their Human Rights Commission to enforce allegations or look into allegations that the town bylaw or the city ordinance was violated. Naturally, here in Wakefield, we do not have any such bylaws, so therefore, we have no jurisdictional power to look into any kind of discriminatory complaints. What we did instead, in order to make sure the citizens of Wakefield do have an opportunity to express concerns that they may have, that their human rights were violated, and to be informed as to what they could do to handle this kinda complaints, is we put together a discipline, a discrimination complaint form, and the way that that works procedurally is, any complaint would be forwarded to Steve Mayo, the town administrator. He would look at that complaint. If he wanted to come to our Human Rights Commission to ask us for advice concerning the complaint that he had in hand, he would communicate with Bill, and we would take a look at that, and then we would give our advice back to Mr. Mayo, and then he, in turn, would correspond with the complainant. What's important there is that we would have no communication or interrela, in, any relationship with the complainant that would go strictly through the town administrator. We would be there to advise Mr. Mayo if he deemed that fit and he sought our, our advice and, and then he would communicate back to the complainant. Once again, the reason for that is we don't have any jurisdiction to handle any kind of complaints that somebody's human rights were violated, because either under the statute or, we don't, we don't have any jurisdiction under the Massachusetts statute, and we don't have any, any town bylaw for us to look at. So if anyone has any questions concerning the policies and procedures, particularly the section on function and powers, we'd be happy to answer them, but we wanted to give you an overview of why we put something together and the contents of what we did put together.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Members of the board, any questions?
I have one more slide.
Ah, one more slide?
Yeah, it wasn't gonna be.
Ah, I'm sorry for interrupting you.
No, just real quick, it's, the, the purpose of the last slide is, what's next? What do we, you know, we, we know what we've done this year, we're gonna continue the education process, we're gonna continue having a presence in community events as they come along. We are planning the January Martin Luther King Community-Wide Event. We're looking at the possibility of having a nine-eleven event in 2017, and we're developing, as I mentioned earlier, we're developing the 2017 strategic plan, and we wanna, and we'll continue our ongoing work with, with the, on presented issues. We'll work with and under the direction of the town administrator, work with the police department as requested, and basically what will become is a place, a place for the town administrator to come for advice, if he, if he wants advice, and, and just a, kind of a hearing place, more than anything, you know? So, and we will continue to work with other organizations as needed or as, as we go along, other organizations, being both other organizations within town, as well as other Human Rights Commissions in the area, okay? So that's it.
The one thing that I like that you've done here is your terms of office, are the three-year term and the two-year term, and it cannot exceed that going twice again. I think that's great, 'cause it gives other people an opportunity, 'cause sometimes terms of office go on and on and on, and, and I think this is an excellent idea, and then it gives somebody else the opportunity to do that. I think you've done a really good job with that.
Absolutely. That's what we, that's why we did that, that's exactly why we did it. Any other questions?
Gentlemen?
No.
You're doing a great job.
You guys are easy.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good luck.
It is now seven forty. We'd like to call the public hearing for liquor license for Indian Flames, Inc. We'll need a motion to enter into the public hearing and the roll call.
Yes.
Yes, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Just for the record, motion was by Selectman Longo, seconded by?
Phyllis.
By Phyllis, okay.
Phyllis and Longo.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Mr. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrae, with offices at five ninety-nine North Avenue in Wakefield, here on behalf of Indian Flames, Inc. This is an application before your board tonight that we're requesting three actions by your board, Mr. Chairman. The first is to request the allowance to transfer of an all-alcohol license from L&amp;B LLC, doing business as Laurie's nine oh nine, to Indian Flames, Inc., doing business as MIA, relating to property known and numbered as thirty-three dash thirty-five Tuttle Street in Wakefield, that will result ultimately in the issuance of an all-alcohol license to Indian Flames, Inc., doing business as MIA. The second request is to allow the pledge of that license back to L&amp;B LLC pursuant to a loan up to an amount of thirty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, in that there will be financing taken back by the seller for the transaction, and that needs to be approved by your board and the Massachusetts Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. And third, a request to grant a common victual license, an entertainment license for three televisions. With me tonight is Cannon Kessavaleu, am I right? Cannon is the president of Indian Flames, Inc., and he is also a shareholder, and also Balmarungan Arumagam. How'd I do with that? All right, we're practicing that all day. And he is the proposed manager of the license. Thought it'd be appropriate to have him here tonight also. Applications have been filed and noticed, published, and mailed, as required by Massachusetts General Laws and your regulations. I wanted to thank the board secretary, Sherry Dalton, for shepherding us through that process. Some histories for the board at this location of thirty-three dash thirty-five Tuttle Street. Laurie's nine oh nine opened in two thousand twelve, and they've operated a very successful and popular Wakefield restaurant since that time. A significant portion of Laurie's business is catering, and she has decided to focus her attention in that direction solely at this time. Laurie will continue to run the restaurant until the end of the year, so it will continue to be open through December, through the holidays, and then her plan is to maintain the catering aspect of her business and to continue that also within the town of Wakefield, so she is not leaving Wakefield. Laurie's and Indian Flames have entered into an agreement for Indian Flames to buy the assets and open a new restaurant with a different theme at the same location of thirty-three thirty-five Tuttle Street. Indian Flames has entered into a lease with the owner of the building for the entire space currently occupied by Laurie's. We have provided copies of the purchase agreement between Laurie's and Indian Flames. We've provided a copy of the signed lease and other documentation as required by your board and the Massachusetts Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. As far as Indian Flames' plan is concerned, they intend to operate a restaurant of Indian cuisine. The principles of Indian Flames, including Cannon, currently operate two other successful restaurants in the area, a restaurant by the name of Wallack Grill in Newton Highlands, and also they own Ristorante Pavarotti, right in Reading Square. Both of these restaurants have all-alcohol licenses, and they've had no issues with the applicable city or town or the Massachusetts Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. They've made an investment in Wakefield in this location, in that they have executed a five-year lease with another five-year option on top of that. There is no plan to change the interior layout of the current restaurant. They plan on just moving in and doing some basic renovation, cleaning up and painting, et cetera, and then opening their restaurant. It will continue to be the seventy-two seats that is currently permitted. As far as hours of operation are concerned, they would like to have hours of eleven AM to one AM, seven days a week, which is fairly standard, although they might, probably would not be open during that entire time. That's fairly consistent with what is transpiring at Laurie's. I think I talked to Sherry about that, and I think Laurie's is actually ten AM to one AM, so I think eleven AM to one AM will be fine. Arumagam, who is the proposed manager of the liquor license, has great experience in this industry, as is evidenced by the application that we've submitted. We've listed his last ten years of employment in the restaurant and food industry. Cannon is excited to bring Indian Flames to Wakefield. I think it's a new cuisine for Wakefield, and they're excited to become a part of the community. With that said, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to entertain any questions that board members may have.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Members of the board, questions?
What date do you anticipate opening?
January.
January.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they wanted to open sooner, but in the event we're successful here tonight, the process at A-B-C-C can take a little bit of time, so the anticipated date will be right after the first year.
Paul Jones, for being late, Mr. McGrath. I was just sitting in the dark for thirty minutes on the commuter rail somewhere in Elrose.
Lucky you.
Yes, it was a lovely experience, without any air lights.
I also did fail to mention that the manager is tip-certified, and all service will be tip-certified.
Phyllis, any questions?
I'm fine.
Peter, I'm fine, too. I think it looks great, that their history and their background and their experience is terrific.
Thank you.
Welcome to the town.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
No, I read it, it looked wonderful. Congratulations.
Mr. McGrath, do you need a finding regarding the church?
Yes. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter one thirty-eight, Section sixteen C, the board is required to find in writing that the issuance of the license, or maintenance of the license at the location is not detrimental to the educational or spiritual activities of any school or church, whether St. Joe's School is across the street. So I did prepare a document for the board to sign in that regard, if I could pass that down.
Continue, Mr. Chairman. Also, under our alcohol policy, the manager will need to be fingerprinted and checked through the police department. Has that happened yet?
Yeah, but that's.
You did that?
No, we, actually, this morning, Mason was called us, officer Mason, yes. He's setting up an appointment between this week, so it's getting done, yeah, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. That's all that I have. Did I have the, the letter from the church that you just sent? So, and there's also a few other. Mr. McGrath, you mentioned a few items that you were going to need approval for. One was going to be for the entertainment, for the three TVs?
Yes, the first is the actual transfer of the all-alcohol license, the second is the pledge of the license back, the security for the loan being given by the seller, the third is the common victual license, and then, it's really four, and then the final is the entertainment of three TVs.
So there's five total?
Four total.
Church?
Transfer, or the church will be, yeah, finding in the church would be, would be a fifth action of the board, I guess.
Okay, so we'll take on one at a time. I'll entertain a motion in the floor to take all five of the items here as one and set forth. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved, moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Before they leave. You missed to ask if there's anybody in the public.
Ah, anyone in the public, yes. Anyone in the public who wish to speak?
Victor?
Victor, no. Victor, say no.
He's in support.
Thank you, thank you, reminder. We just need to assign.
Thank you so much, thanks for giving us an opportunity to do it.
Please, thanks for coming to town.
Welcome to Wakefield.
Yeah, thanks for bringing the business.
Appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Seconded.
Seconded?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes. We are now out of the public hearing for the liquor license. We have ten minutes before we need to go back into public hearing, so let's address the other items that we skipped over and see if we can move through those as well. There is a request from firefighter Stephen Bivens for an MDA boot drive on November twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, from nine-thirty AM until twelve-thirty PM.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The scene collaborative leases, we have the paperwork going around for signatures, it's already, we don't have the board.
Yep, you do, you should.
Okay, so we need to entertain a motion, please, to, for the scene collaborative lease?
Just for the people at home, this is for the Yule School, that is still under the control of the Wakefield Public Schools, so that being the case, both the school committee, which has already signed it, needs the selectmen to sign it as well, and this is for a one-year lease for July first, two thousand sixteen, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, it's for a hundred and two thousand dollars.
I move that we accept the lease as just read by Mr. Mayo, for the scene collaborative.
So moved.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. It was recommended that the Board of Selectmen designate one Board of Selectmen member to approve treasury warrants, with the understanding that the designee needs to make available to the board at the first meeting following the approval of warrants a record of such actions. This is to make it easier on all us, instead of looking for multiple signatures, we'll appoint one person to sign the warrants as presented to us. And I have a motion.
If it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Denak, I'd like to nominate you as this person.
Thank you, sir.
Seconded.
Seconded. Thank you, sir. I will take it. Do I have any discussion on the designation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Yeah, crazy, crazy as the crazy does. Thank you. We have a request from the Holiday Stroll Committee of the EPC to have an extension of the shutdown area for December third to include the area up in, including the Rockery in order to capture several businesses that want to participate in this year's event. So there's a motion that we extend it from Yale Street to Crescent for the shutdown on the northern side of Main.
What are those, what are those areas that want to participate?
That would be Magoon Insurance, Zuzu's Cafe, and Wakefield Uncommon.
That seems like it would be a good idea.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Oh, is already a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. End of the discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to personnel and appointments. We have an appointment of the Record Access Officer designated as Town Clerk Betsy Sherman. Do I have a?
Yeah, let's give a little background on this. Under the new public records law, which was recently passed by the state legislature, cities and towns, municipalities need to actually appoint a records access officer. It does make sense that it is the town clerk, the town clerk is the keeper of the records. So I've already spoken to the town clerk, Betsy Sherman, she is willing and thrilled to take on, she's probably watching at home, thrilling to take on this, an extra duty, particularly during open, early voting. But we actually have a very good system set up where all requests for public records will be funneled through the town clerk's office. In fact, we're already practicing it to make sure that we are certainly in compliance with the Freedom of Information requests. This is a formality, I think, for us, 'cause we, Wakefield has had a pretty good track record on this, so, but we do need under the law to appoint a records access officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Any questions from the members of the board?
None.
I'll entertain a motion then to appoint Town Clerk Betsy Sherman.
Aye.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. We have appointments to the Veterans Advisory Board, term to end December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. I'll entertain a motion to vote the slate. So we have William Walsh, twenty Greenwood Street, Thomas Collins, sixty-six Cedar Street, and Melinda Cook, twenty-two Upland Road.
I'll make a motion to accept those.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much. We have appointments to the Charter Review Committee. Stacy Constance?
Constance.
Constance, thank you. Twenty-five Wave Avenue.
I would move to appoint Stacy, as she and I went to law school together almost thirty years ago, so she is a, moved to Wakefield to raise her family, she's a super smart woman, practicing attorney, and has been active in different areas, and this is her first dive into this kind of volunteering for Wakefield, I think she'd be great.
If you'd have a second. Comment.
I second that, but I would like to make a comment. I think that she would be one, so to my understanding. I would like to keep, maybe this deserve, should be another motion, I would like to keep only, keep ten people on that charter commission, not any more, because I think it's a big job, and I think there'll be a lot of differences and a lot of things going on. I would like to keep the committee at ten people. I do, I would not like to see any more people added.
Can I argue the point for making it eleven instead of ten? If you do ten, you could have a five-five tie, and not the removal.
That's fine. Eleven would be fine, but I think that should be the most, and we should really try to encourage people to come and to get on the bylaw committee.
Bylaw committee, yes.
Actually, the bylaw committee is, it's a pretty busy, and it's a pretty important job for the bylaws, so I think anybody else that applies after the eleven, I think that's a good idea.
So let's.
We should look forward to getting more people on the bylaw committee.
Okay, so how do I? So let's address the one, the appointment to the Charter Review Committee first. Motion then, seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, how do we want to address the fact of limiting the charter to eleven members only? Do we want to do that now?
You can, if you wish.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on the issue that was presented on the floor just now, to limit the membership to eleven members for the Charter Review Committee.
What, just for clarification, what are we at now?
Ten.
Ten. Okay.
And the reason to go to eleven is so you don't have to.
Of course, yeah. No, that's, yeah, that's a good number.
Okay, so motion was right, Phyllis. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Seconded by Tony. Do we, any further discussion? Nothing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Phyllis. It is one minute of, what do you want to do? We don't have enough.
We can see what the correspondence are.
Okay, so we have correspondence, we have a letter from the Wakefield Retirement Board regarding Michael Petrucci, and we also have a notice in our package about the Albion Arts Karra Kickoff Meeting, which is November seventeenth. Everyone is invited to attend, so that's gonna be a very informative meeting that day by MAPC.
What time, excuse me, Chairman, when does that start?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock?
Yes. Yes.
So people at home can?
At the Galvin.
The Galvin.
Okay.
We have a party here, 6:30.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Okay, we are now going to go into public hearing for the tax classification, a reaffirmation of the vote that we took two weeks ago. We'll call vote, so all in favor going into motion, a motion, please, for, to go into public hearing?
Yeah.
Motion by Phyllis, seconded by Ian.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Victor, how are you, sir?
I'm swell.
Yes, swell. I know you're swell.
Congratulations on a big victory yesterday.
Oh, gee, thanks.
Victor, we're here to vote on the, to reaffirm what was decided by this Board at the last meeting after your presentation. Is there anything further that you need to present to us at this time?
Unless anyone would like to ask me any questions about what I presented, or anything like that?
Is there any questions from the floor as to what's being done right now?
No.
Anything from the audience? Okay, so, thank you. Just making sure. So we have before us four items. I'll read them off. Selection of the minimum residential factor of 87.8701.
Point eight seven, eight seven, oh one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Point eight seven, eight seven, oh one. Selection of the open space discount, the Board said no. Granting of a residential exemption, again, no. In granting of a small commercial exemption, we said no. So I will entertain a motion then to vote as presented.
Seconded as read.
Seconded as read. So any further questions? Hearing none?
Who made the actual motion?
That came from me.
Okay.
From the Chair. Came from the Chair. No questions, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor.
Victor, you did a tough one.
Good job.
Close there for a minute.
What a job you did.
So good last time.
You did so well, we couldn't say no to you.
Have a good evening, folks.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yes, we need to come out of the public hearing?
I move that we come out of public hearing.
Seconded, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you very much. We are now out of the public hearing and resume the regular hosted meeting. I think we went through all items on the agenda.
I believe you did.
And I will now go roundtable. Phyllis?
I just want to say that I was so happy to see so many more people going to the veterans down at the, down at the Galvin School, the veterans thing going on down there. There were a lot more people, and thought the speech was great, and I thought everybody just did a great job, and that's all I have to say. Except it was so windy, it was unbelievable. But it was, it was good, that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ian?
I agree with Phyllis, it was a great celebration, and I think sometimes the reason why we don't see children at that celebration is because they have it at every school. You know, our school system is, is proud of our veterans, and I went to the Galvin the day before, and it was lovely. Did we note, and I think it's important to note during the meeting, that we received a letter of resignation from Bronwyn Delavope?
We did not note it.
Okay, I think it's important that we state in open meeting that we did receive a letter of resignation from Ms. Bronwyn Delavope.
Actually, a declination of, of declining the appointment.
Declining the appointment, okay. Splitting hairs there, but yep, certainly. And so, decline the appointment from the Bylaw Committee, so we have an open seat and a few open seats there. And then, Paul, just to clarify, the correspondence, in looking at it more closely, it was a letter from the Wakefield Retirement Board about Michael Petrucci, not from Michael Petrucci, so, yeah.
Yes.
Based on the letter, I think that's important. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Longo?
I just want to say congratulations to my friend Perry Pappas, the track coach, for his state championship this past weekend. And the other thing I just wanted to touch base on briefly was, I've had discussions with Steve and Recreation Director Dan McGrath in the preliminary period right now of maybe having the jurisdiction of the Americal Civic Center being brought over to the Recreation Department. We're kind of very early in the discussion, there's a lot of work to do, but I think it makes sense, and the long-term revenue growth that we can obtain from that building only benefits the town and our residents.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Okay, a couple things, Mr. Chairman. I've had some calls, again, on the lighting outside on Farmer Street in front of the high school, but as I drove in tonight, I noticed it was much better already. And I guess the point I wanted to bring up is some of the bright white lights, I don't know if they're halogens or not, but they, they look great. There's still a lot of yellow out there as well, so it seems like it's about a 50/50 mix, especially right on the corner here as you turn in, there's three yellows. So I'm wondering if, it looks like Rix Denson, DPW is doing a great job, they're already attacking the issue, and this came up maybe a couple months ago when I was talking to them, but it's, if something we can make note of to just talk to them, say, hey, he may have had a plan to do the other half, but just want to put that out there, because it looks great, and a lot of the citizens are worried about with the early evenings now, the after-school sports banned, and anyone who's here crossing the street, you don't want to have them hurt, injured with the traffic. So that, that would be great if we could make a note of that. So it looks like literally it's just the white ones compared to the yellow ones, pretty easy to identify. But way, way better already. Second point I have is, with the recent ballot number four, I wanted to bring up, in a general discussion about the ballot question four, it passed in the state, this is the marijuana question, just in case anyone didn't know what four was. We should, as a town, I think we should take a look at, especially since the town voted, I think 53 to 47, said no, the state said yes. To protect ourselves, we should probably bring it up as an agenda item to discuss at the next meeting. I think we should start to look into that, see what we can do to protect ourselves from a very, I think loosely worded ballot question. So if we could add it to the agenda, that would be great.
I think the state's also doing that.
Are they?
The treasurer is concerned that it's so loosely worded, that she doesn't, she's concerned about implementing it, and I think they're trying to bring before the state a push-out date into 2018. I don't know if that's going to be successful, but.
Because 12/15 is the date that it's actually going into.
Absolutely, it's in a month.
So, right, so that's why I thought we could get a jump on it anyway, because local consideration, if we have, I think we have some powers that we'll find out.
We have some, but not as many as I think we'd like to have.
Well, that's why I wanted to explore it anyways, to see if the state is going to control everything. We'll find out soon, but.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a good idea.
So if we could do that, that would be.
I can jump in on that.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, actually tomorrow, Town Council, myself, the police chief, who's been to the Mass Chiefs Meeting, I think Friday, they're very concerned statewide, so they're bringing back some information, what health is going to be there, our substance abuse coalition is going to be there, we're really going to see what we can do. I've also had discussions with our state delegation, they're looking to make some changes from their end too, and are actually looking for some input from us on how to give us more authority, or create this, make some language changes, because some of the language changes, language in the bill is very problematic for how we have any local control over anything. And Tom and I have discussed this, and we'll come back with some, hopefully some good input next week, and be looking forward from the Board too, so it is a, it is a, it is a tough one.
Very good.
It is important to remember, the legislation was written by the marijuana industry.
Absolutely, yeah. They did a good job.
They did a great job.
Themselves they did. Thomas?
I gather from the high number of people who want to be on the Charter Committee, and the low number of people who want to be on the Bylaw Committee, that people think charters are sexy and bylaws are boring.
Yes, that's been said.
That's entirely wrong. I would just want to say to anybody who's interested in doing something useful for their community, I wouldn't be surprised if the Charter Review Committee came back and said, no changes are recommended. On the other hand, our bylaws are a total mess.
I agree.
And I'm largely responsible myself, I don't mean to point the finger elsewhere, but I can think of three things right off the top of my head that, that mean we need major changes in our general bylaws. One, at the time we adopted our charter, there was a committee that went through the bylaws to see what bylaw changes would be necessary to coordinate with the new charter. And they came up with this long report, and nothing happened. We didn't pass any changes. Two, when we codified our bylaws, I didn't notice, nobody else noticed, but apparently a whole bunch of bylaws just got left on the cutting room floor. You may recall that Nazis came to Wakefield a few years ago. I thought, well, it's a handy time to pull out my old parade permit bylaw. It's not there. So I went into the street armed with the old bylaw, hoping none of the Nazis would notice.
They didn't.
And finally, just this year, the legislature passed the Municipal Modernization Act, which is replete with opportunities for communities to take advantage of new laws if they pass bylaws. But you've got to do it, you've got to actually pass them. So there are all kinds of opportunities to improve our bylaws, that's where the action's going to be. I urge people to get on that committee, because that's the committee I'm going to be working with. That's true. That's why I brought that up, the Bylaw Committee is really an important committee.
Yes, it is.
They're the ones that will really be looking, and that make the changes in the charter through the bylaws, you're right.
So if anyone on the Charter Committee wants to transfer.
Jump ship.
To do that, as Phil said, there's a large number, they'll only take two transfers at a time, though, because they don't keep an odd number.
Mr. Mayo?
Besides the fact that Attorney Mullen is really going to spearhead the Bylaw Committee, so you get to work with Tom, pithy sense of humor. Just one, a very quick thing, Mr. Chairman, well, two actually. Thursday night at 7:00 at the Galvin Cafeteria is a great chance to get involved. The MAPC is really looking for input on the, on the Albion Street corridor, the Arts District, how we're going to help revitalize the downtown, so I do invite the public to come and take advantage of it, and listen to each other, and listen what has, the MAPC has to say. They're really looking for input, it's going to be, I think, a pretty exciting night. Number two is that I was very happy to attend the Wakefield 101 session on November 5th, Saturday, November 5th, and Selectmen Longo, Selectmen May, and Selectmen Denak were there. And I got to say that we have some of the nicest people, new people coming to Wakefield, and they are so thrilled to be here and be part of this town. And we had people from police, fire, DPW, rec, schools, Human Rights Commission, Defense Planning, myself, our assessor was there, and he had printed the assessor's card for everybody that had signed up, so they could get a look at their property. And one woman came, and she said, jeez, she says, my property is assessed for way more than I bought it for. Victor told her how to come in and fill out a, an abatement application, I guess it needed a lot of work, and, you know, was inside, we didn't know, so that's the kind of things that I think this town does offer to people, and I think that sets us apart, and I want to thank my department heads for taking time out on a Saturday morning to come down there, and, and the Board members that partake in it, I think it was a really good day, so thank you. And that's it, me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayo. Just to speak on the Wakefield 101, it was great to see the age group that was in there, 25 to 35 maybe, there were a lot of young couples coming through there, and that was very impressive. They had 55 couples sign up for that 101. There were a lot of people that walked through there, so it was, it was great to see them coming in, trying to find out what interaction they can do with the community, how they can get involved, and a lot of them are already starting to get involved, so that's a great thing. Just a couple of items on my own. Steve, we already talked, you said you placed the order for the uprights for Main Street?
Yep, they should be in, yep.
That's great, excellent. Just to jump on to karma from Peter. Peter, some of the lights that we deal with right now, from my research, MLD has control over, DPW has control over the others. So, and they use, they don't use the same bulb. Some of, the new ones that are coming out on the streets, the MLD replaces, are softer light, more concentrated, instead of widespread. So those are maybe what we should be having in it. If you're talking about into the property here, that may be DPW because of school property, Steve?
Yes. Mostly I was speaking about the Main Street, but however, of course, the street is very busy as well for the side.
Right.
So that's, both are.
No, it's good points, it's good points, but I've noticed though in the past that when we try to get something done, we say, oh, wrong department.
Okay.
So you have to go to the right people to get.
So what do you want, the yellow or the white bulbs? We have to figure out.
Well, you have to see who's doing what.
Okay.
Okay, and then maybe we get both of them together and say, why don't you just put the same bulb in at all times, and we'll have the town looking the same.
Okay.
But thank you. I think that is, oh, you mentioned the cross-country team and their championship, state champions, but don't forget the state champions of the cheerleaders. Callaher, is her name, if I'm not mistaken, the coach, they did outstanding job. We have three championship organizations right now, the marching band, the color guard day one, when they did their competition, the cross-country, and now the cheerleaders. So schools are doing really good as far as putting their best effort forward, so they're doing a great job there, got to give them credit.
But heck, we're going to be the city's champions pretty soon.
Let's do it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just one more thing, I wanted to say, thank you to the Friends of Lake Quanapow for the breakfast on Sunday, a lot of folks attended, I think there was 180 people that purchased tickets, and it's a great organization, they're looking for volunteers as well, Friends of Lake Quanapow, so if you have time and want to join a committee first time, or your seventh committee, consider the Friends of Lake Quanapow. It's definitely a gem, as Tony always mentions in town, and we all think of it as a gem, so help keep it that way. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
I'd like to bring up another subject, something that's been brought to my attention many times over the past few years.
Okay.
What can we do about the lights on the trees, those, we need some bright lights. Our downtown area is dull with the Christmas tree lights, there's those little tiny bulbs. Why can't we put some beautiful lights on the trees and on the decorations? Why are we using those little LEDs for everything?
Are you referring to the Upper Common?
Yes.
That would, you'd have to bring, discuss this.
Who do we have to go to about that?
Neighborhood.
WC Center.
Wakefield Center Neighborhood Association is the one that takes care of the lighting of the common and the lighting of the tree too, if I'm not mistaken. The first Friday of December every year is the lighting of the Upper Common in the Christmas tree. That is done by that organization, they deal with that. I think they use LED in order for the, if it snows, the light actually doesn't blow, and it makes it stay longer.
They don't seem to have that trouble in any other towns. They have the bright lights, the big lights, everything looks beautiful.
Well, if you're looking for the real big lights, I'm all in favor.
I mean, this, this has been brought to my attention, not this year, but the year before, and the year before, and people keep saying to me, what can we do about the lighting downtown? Because it's boring.
There is a couple of items being discussed right now regarding all the trees in the downtown, and how best to light them, but it takes time because it has to be a cost